All right, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation through hunger, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will be annoying, oh thinking. Thank you so much. Do a quick roll call. Councilor Richard.
Here. Present. Here.
Councilor Olson.
Here.
Councilor Turnbull.
Here.
That Councilmember Maxwell has asked the excuse due to illness to entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Maxwell.
So moved, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you, council. Opportunity now for interested citizen comment. So anybody online or in the room, this is your opportunity. We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Going once, twice. Okay, you're in that one, ask again later. We do have some important announcements tonight.
Need to approve the agenda.
Oh, approve the approval of the, I'm just so excited to get started. Um, any changes or additions to the agenda? For many councilmembers, sunny, any changes? Okay.
Moved, moved to approve.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, the agenda is approved, is submitted. Now we'll get to some of the more fun stuff. You put, we already did that. So the announcements, pro forma motions and special presentations. We want to invite Lauren Ray Abbott to come forward to receive the oath of office. She was selected in our last council meeting by this council to serve in the vacant council seat. And so welcome, we're so pleased to have you. And our city clerk, he's feeling a little ill tonight, so he's getting some distance.
So save you a little bit there. Okay, if you don't mind raising your right hand and repeating after me. I, Lauren Ray Abbott.
I, Lauren Ray Abbott.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am legally qualified.
That I am legally qualified.
To assume the office of the City of Medical Lake.
To assume the office of the City of Medical Lake.
Council position number six.
Council position number six.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And laws of the United States and the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and the Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington.
And laws of the State, Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. So we, next, I would like to recognize. Earl Munson, he has served for three and a half years on the planning commission faithfully, diligently with enthusiasm and passion. And I know that he'll continue to be advisory to that select group that's still working on planning or on the comp plan. But I would like you to come forward, so we can present you with this plaque.
My goodness, it's not even Christmas.
I know, if you even have a bow or anything, okay, take your picture, you're served.
Sorry.
We appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, we look forward to continue to working with you, whatever capacity you still.
Did I take about thirty seconds to say something?
Please do.
Medical Lake has tremendous potential, and I did not grow up here. I moved here because I could see tremendous potential. I'm gonna give you a real quick example of what I'm talking about. I was reading a golf magazine about two months ago, and they listed the top golf courses in the state of Washington, and there was only one in eastern Washington. And that was in Chiwila, and being new to the territory, I didn't know where that was. But evidently, a lot of people did, or they wouldn't have had it in that article. And so I drove up to Chiwila. And I checked out their twenty-seven hole golf course. They have both the American Legion and VFW in town. They share the same building. They have a very nice safe way. They have four hospitality facilities. They have a very large downtown park with an amphitheater. Just a lot of things like that, but they only have a population of twenty-five hundred. The advantage that they've had over Medical Lake is that they got going a long time ago. We're just kind of picking up the slack now, but one thing that we have that, well, besides the lakes, they don't have no lakes, but besides the lakes, we're, you know, we're only about ten, fifteen minutes away from the airport. And that counts for a lot when people are coming and going in this day and age. So anyway, anything that I can do henceforth to help out, I'll be happy to do. The reason that I'm resigning is my wife is in terrible condition, and I just need to stay at home. Anyway, thank you very much.
Well, like, share your passion, you know, for the golf course and the amenities, and so we're gonna keep working on that, of course. And I have golf to wheel it is beautiful course, but we can do better than that because we have a better package to put around it. So that's my opinion. Thank you. Reports, then we'll move to the public safety report. We'll hear from fire and police, and if I got that wrong order this time. Trying to do it right. Chief Erbong, thanks for being here.
Yeah, good to see everyone.
Good to see you.
So we had a leg with our analyst on some of the stats, and I finally sent him an email, and he said, wow, my, my calendar reminder expired, so it hadn't been sent around to anyone. So we got that. Looking at just over six hundred and thirty calls total for the year finishing up Medical Lake with the last, last month of October, just over mid, mid seventy calls, a little on the higher end, but certainly not out of the normal, been there in the seventies, two other months. If you recall, our early discussions, they're a very slow start for Medical Lake, but this is how call volume goes over the long period, catching up, catching up to the last few months. And so I anticipate you'll finish out the year with just over seven hundred calls, so. Pulled out the DSHS associate call volume, pretty average as well. We had the significant event that, of course, occurred in September there. But, but outside of that, you know, wildfire season wrapping up for us, we've called this a season ending event. So doesn't mean that we couldn't have something on a really bad windy day, but overall, the, the season has wrapped up, which brings us into, I think, winter will be here. At some point, which where we see the, the heating season, we often see structural fires. And so that will be the, the next thing that we're probably experiencing. Haven't seen that reflected in the call volume yet. And I think it's primarily due to the warmer attempts we've had going into, into fall. So more, more to come on that, and hopefully I'm wrong, and we don't, we don't have any. But that's, that's what late November, December normally brings for us.
Thank you. Fire season, and we did pretty well right here, but as far as your all of our districts, which are very large area, how, how did you compare this year to?
About mid seventies per call, so about, you know, it could be a pretty big swing on that, but I'd say close to average for us. And I'd say from a, from an indices standpoint and all the potential, everything was in play for a very challenging wildfire season. So a lot of good suppression activity to keep them small. You didn't have to go too far outside our borders to see what was. And I spent several weeks in Wenatchee with the lower sugar loaf and labor mountain fires and really challenging all the way, all the way through September. And so just, you know, it looked like late August, like, hey, maybe we're, the state's getting through season. And September came back with, with the vengeance, but I think locally, we're very fortunate, again, good, good suppression action across the county with aggressive initial attack. Lot of aircraft to hit fires hard and quick when they are small. But yeah, it was, all the ingredients were here for, for a tough year, so.
We appreciate you. Any questions for fire?
Yes, you said your budget is all set for next year also?
Yes.
True. And did you want to touch at all on the dispatch issues?
I'd be happy to talk a little bit, you know, we talked in, in the public safety group, just about, a number of folks have followed what's going on between the city of Spokane and the, the county agencies with Spokane Regional Emergency Communications. And so in, in July of this year, the interlocal agreement for the regional center to provide services for the city of Spokane was, was terminated based on, you know, the six months notice required in the contract, based on legislation that was ran by the, by the city of Spokane to apportion the tax dollars that are used to support emergency communications. So they created legislations that, that states those dollars would be apportioned effective January first of next year. So that, that legislation requires those funds for emergency services to go to the, the city. So the county said, okay, take the money, you also take the work associated with that. The reality of the situation is that city's not currently in position to be able to provide the full suite of services that the regional center offers today. They can provide some of those. They, they currently dispatched for Spokane Police Department is what's called a secondary piece app. Meaning the call comes into the regional center and then is passed to them as a secondary answering point. Right now, there's discussions ongoing that, because there is no ILA for services beyond January one, but city's not in a position to handle those calls as the primary answering point. The calls are still coming in to the county. And so really trying to find a, a agreement for both sides on, and the county has offered the ability to continue to provide those services based on agreement around what equitable apportionment would be, and that is not defined by the legislation. It just says that both parties will agree on what equitable is, and we, we have not been able to agree. And so cities had proposed that it should be based on how much they use the system or how much they spend, and none of the other agencies think that's how revenues work. So we propose that if you generate the revenues, you can have them, but it's not based on how much you spend. And so there's some, even some disagreement there where there's some, and I think good, good cases to be made for population as a metric, but also a good case to be made for sales tax origination, because we do know a lot of people go and work inside the city of Spokane. They do generate more revenues from dollars spent in there. And so you can make a case that, okay, sales tax origination would be, would be equitable. And so we have offered that as our proposed equitable solution, that sales tax origination for, for the one tenth, the one percent sales tax, the voters approved to support emergency communication. So we'll see if we get there, but it's really down to the last minute as far as the ability to structure an agreement, get that signed between both parties and provide services post-January.
Yeah.
One, and so in, in the absence of a structured agreement, we could see public safety impacts related to nine-one-one services come January first. So I'm cautiously optimistic that both sides are invested in trying to solve that, and of course, want to prioritize the community, but it's complicated. Folks have not been able to agree on what equitable apportionment is, and if it's not settled at this level, the legislation specifies it'll go to the Supreme Court, so.
So in essence, the Spokane wanted the money, but not the work?
You know, that would be. My, my perception is that if you legislate the, the funding, you get the associated work. And so I think their, their perspective would be, we're okay doing the work, we're just not ready for that. But I think the real rub then beyond that is we don't want the money based on how much we generate. We want it based on how much we spend. And so the other agencies, the twenty other fire law agencies around the county go, well, why, why would our, if we're separate now, and we're not together, we're not together anymore, we're separate. Why would we be taking funding out of our jurisdictions to provide emergency services inside the city of Spokane? So that's the, that's the rub. And so they see that as subsidization, subsidization of another agency who has chose to separate. And so if we're all not together, and this is what from my perspective, I think the city had the most to benefit from being a regional member. And I'll tell you why. Emergency dispatch services are funded from three, three different funding mechanisms. One is the one tenth of one percent sales tax, the other one's a nine-one-one excise tax that you see on your, your phone bill. You ever seen the roughly a dollar? And then the, the remainder is made up with the user fees. All the agencies pay a user fee to cover the difference at the end. Because the full cost of the services provided exceed the two, the two other funding sources, one tenth of one percent and nine-one-one excise tax. So when everybody was together, the one tenth sales tax and the nine-one-one excise tax for your phone bill all went into the same pot. So we had all twenty agencies across the county, including the city of Spokane. If one of those agencies has twelve percent more work than the revenues they generate, who's spending that money down the quickest? So they were already receiving the benefit, right? Because before the legislation dropped, nobody was accounting. We all just put the funds into the same. It was for everyone, and if somebody had a big year and more call volume, they got the benefit first. So my opinion, city was receiving the most benefit because of the, at the high watermark, they're generating forty-eight percent of the revenue. But they're spending at sixty percent. And these are, these are millions of dollars, so it's not insignificant. So that, and again, they, they might explain that differently, but that's certainly the, the perception of the twenty other fire and law agencies across the county. And so now that the legislation's dropped, there's been an actual accounting. Well, who's, who's spending all the money? Because we have to, we have to divide the dollars now, and we have not been able to reach agreement on that. So it's kind of, kind of challenging, and I think, you know, they, they have a case to be made that it should be available. We have more use because there's more people here, so that's their position, and then you could see the county all the way over on, well, it should just be strictly population, and so you have kind of anywhere between sixty percent, forty-two percent with, with hopefully, I'm hopeful that both sides, and there's, there's, there is collaborative discussion ongoing currently. Coming together somewhere in the middle on that, and I'm, I'm hoping it's closer to maybe sales tax origination for the one tenth, which is kind of the, the bigger share of revenues. And then maybe for phones, it's, it's forty-two percent, so kind of a compromise for both sides.
We've needed divorce is ugly business.
Well, it, it really is, and that's, that's what, and it is.
We only had to tear this apart and try to dismantle it and then to set up what was already a complex system, and now we have two and try to integrate them separately. It's I just.
Correct, and when you've had that relationship, to divorce that relationship and say, hey, there's not gonna be impacts from that, that's, that's not, so there will be impact. How do we mitigate and minimize that, knowing, knowing there's different perspectives, which try to respect both, both views? But, you know, the community's got in the middle of this, and so we need to, we need to deliver the best possible outcome for the, the community.
Hey, if you're divorced, I, I'm not gonna pay your phone bill, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why.
You know, you want to be separate, you want to be big and independent, and okay, then you should pay for what you use it.
Yeah.
Fund it yourself, because that's what you wanted to do.
Yes.
That's kind of my simple, oversimplifying.
But I, I agree a hundred percent, and I, I've always said, I respect the right of any agency to determine what is best for their agency. But with that, you also accept the responsibility then for those decisions, right? And so there's that. Okay. Have the revenues. We need to, we need to find a way that the other agencies then aren't subsidizing the operations though inside, because we are, we're separate.
I sure appreciate you taking the time to explain that to us and to the public, so it's, it's really important.
Happy to do that, and I'm, I'm hopeful that I come back in December and say, hey, there's a, there's a workable solution that both sides have agreed to. I'm, I am cautiously optimistic over recent discussions. We still have some gaps, but, you know, Jan- January one. Yeah, so it's, I do think it's a priority for the, the city of Spokane, as well as the county commissioners and everybody at the regional center. And so that's the good news. Everybody understands it's a, a priority, and hopefully we can come back with a proposed solution.
Thanks for the update. I appreciate it. Any other questions or things that want to be brought up? Okay, well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll talk about social media and the Santa schedule next time.
Okay.
That'll, that'll be here too.
All right, that's true. We'll see you on the second.
Thanks, chief.
And, and no one here, please, just there's a.
Good evening, everybody. It's got a relatively brief update, but with the October stats here, they came off the press last week. Numbers for October are looking really good in comparison to the twenty twenty-four activity, and our year-to-date numbers overall are looking really good. You'll notice, or you might have noticed that on page, what would have been page three of the packet contains this page where it breaks down, or breaks out the cases at the twenty-three-twenty South Solmay Road and eight fifty West Maple Street. So the, the DSHS facilities. So probably the biggest takeaway that we see here is in the, both the assault categories. Aggravated assault, two of them year-to-date occurred at, at one of the facilities and fifty-three of the simple assaults. So when you flip back to page two, the total aggravated assaults for Medical Lake in twenty twenty-five were four, so only two of those happened outside the facilities. Eighty total within Medical Lake for simple assaults, of which twenty, twenty-seven were here in town, and the other fifty-three were at one of the facilities. Hopefully that adds a little bit of value as we're, we're evaluating crime trends and trying to figure out exactly where the issues are occurring. The other thing that I'm happy to speak about is that I've been working, met with Ken Rains, who's the security director at Eastern State Hospital. We're working to try and get a greater presence on, on their grounds and, and seeing what we can do to, to collaborate with them on topics of security. So he was particularly interested in some communications, being able to listen to police radio, having a greater presence law enforcement on campus. So I've got another meeting scheduled with him, as well as his, his boss at the state level, his counterpart, his, his supervisors. Looking forward to making progress on that. Does any, anybody have any questions for me or law enforcement related questions, comments?
The only thing that, that we start trying to find assaults, you know, then maybe that is violent crime, it is violent crime. I'm curious, maybe we could do a look at how many of those were domestic violence?
Yeah.
That tells a lot about the health of a community, and I would like to be able to draw the pulse of it's never an increase. It's about the same, was up trended over the last few years for the domestic violence. I know those are tracked by the domestic violence unit, but if we could tag of those assaults, how many of those are domestic violence? And then of the others, you know, I know it's only like two a month or something, but for us, you know, it looks like a big number. I mean, it isn't, but it looks like a big number, you know, and there is some sense of what is, what does that look like? Are these kids at the high school, is this, you know? I don't know what, kids in the park or people who come from out of town, and it was something that happens in the park during the summer, you know, I mean, I just don't know, but I would kind of like to get an idea of where those are happening and why, and why, and so we can be aware. So those are my thoughts. I don't know if council has got any other questions or?
I can get you a, a breakdown year-to-date as to what proportion are, are domestic violence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Of those ones in the city, and some of those in the institutions involved by that way too sometimes, but anyway.
Yeah, typically they.
Changes in the law there, you know, the roommate thing, I think, went away some years ago.
Yeah, it's particularly when you are in, in control over who you're, who you're residing with. So if you're assigned somewhere to be and you have an assigned roommate, that kind of is counter to the, the law, but yeah, if it's simply, you know, with those other twenty-seven, we can, we can figure out what percent.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. You have a question, Councilor Richard?
Is there any update on the September, like motivations of why that happened, or like?
Getting, I know, nothing new yet, emails, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we'll ever know why.
Action, okay.
There were, there were some comments that were made, particularly when, when he was when, when he had his interaction with fire. That would wreck, that would seem to suggest that maybe he wasn't, he was in, he may have had a mental health crisis or mental health issues, some of the things he was saying. But I, I don't know that we'll ever know.
Okay, yeah, yeah, people mentioned, you know, why is that house, why they go to that house?
Yeah, that, we don't, we don't know of any, or I don't know at this point of any connection. Maybe that, that will change.
Thank you.
It'll be nice to see that report be released, just so that we can have an end, I guess, and, and maybe understand a few things and things like this don't happen because it makes sense, and so, you know.
So typically, what will happen with those type, with those investigations when it involves an officer involved shooting, the things that, that take the time. There, there'll be toxicology reports that go to the state, and those sometimes take a little bit of time as, as well as the forensics related to ballistics and, and those sorts of things. Those also take a little bit of time in testing at the state lab. Then once the investigation is completed, it'll go to the prosecutor. The prosecutor will evaluate the officer's actions. And typically, they will have the entire case reviewed by two, maybe three prosecutors, just to make sure that they have the consensus that it is or isn't within the confines of the law, and then it gets released. So it's a long process.
It's good to be thorough, so.
Yes.
And we're thankful for the process. There was a lot of public engagement to make sure that happens, and so it always takes longer. Understand that, but appreciate the report. Anything else from council that we're thinking of? Anyway, appreciate you and thank you for us to keep you safe. Good evening. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Moving then to, if it's the committee reports, Councilmember.
A new report. I have a report from STA. So the twenty twenty-six service revisions, the draft is out for all of the route changes. We're trying to work something out with meet school districts similar to. We're trying to work something out with Mead School District, similar to Spokane School District. Uh, Mead has expressed an interest in utilizing STA to help trans- uh transfer some of their students. Um, they're also moving into the Hilliard area and then they're doing some other revisions. So. The public input for the draft period is from this last thirteenth of November to the fifteenth of December. Um, so there's some interaction points on the website and then there's also this large outreach prank. Plan where they're going to be trying to give uh tabletop displays. Reach out to, you know, libraries, food banks, um schools, uh community events and stuff like that to be able to provide this. Uh, information to the public and receive input. So it's all flexible until about March. So. Uh, that's one big thing that's coming out and then um. STA is applying for a grant from the state for about half a million dollars for FIFA World Cup support. So Spokane's been. Selected as one of the um fan zone cities for the World Cup. So that'll be the summer. They're expecting about three quarters of a million people in Seattle. Uh, during the three weeks while they'd be playing in Seattle. And so we're designated fan zone, like a secondary location. They'll be um showing some of the events at Spokane One Stadium. And uh we have an opportunity, one of the teams might pick us, Spokane is like one of their practice spaces. So essentially they would be here for two months, practice stateside and then fly to their events. So um we're gonna, the state's trying to get ahead of it so that we can bolster up. Services and all of the areas where this is going to be in effect. Um, and so. So everybody be aware, there might be a lot more people here June and July. So specifically for soccer.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Um, I attended the Regional Transportation Council meeting last week. Uh, it was just um. General exhibition, everything was going on. One of the things was uh. Talking about the unified list for the federal projects. And uh most of the recommendations come through the technical committee, which I think Sunny's on. And whatnot, but they've mentioned that the current transportation, federal transportation bill expires on November thirtieth of next year. So there'll be new legislation that happens somewhere between now and before that expires. So. Uh, there might be more money or there might be less, you know, don't know about that one. So. And also they um gave a brief uh update on the Horizon twenty fifty of projects in the area. And whatnot and they um which was released last couple of weeks ago, at least. And the only thing I noticed about the the general discussion about that was that they received ninety public comments on it. And twenty were in opposition to the light rail project between Spokane and Cortlande. Then they thought that that project was not in the plan, so they were complaining to something that wasn't listed. So also, plans committee missed tonight, found no problems with the the expenditures and whatnot, I believe.
Thank you for giving your team review. Appreciate that. Uh, our newest council member, three, council member Ray Abbott, anything that you would like to say?
Yes, the uh Safety Committee and the General Government Committee met tonight and. Want to thank again, thanks again to the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office for their extensive reports. Makes my job a lot easier. They are, that is very thorough. Uh, as far as safety, the uh street paving is completed on Silver Lake and Stanley Drive and. With the rains we've had, the drain is good. So that's a, that's a positive. Storm drains are being cleaned in preparation for the winter runoff and of course that can happen anytime now. Lake Street, the eighty-eight ramp grades, uh the upgrades are all completed and they're going to do a walkthrough on Tuesday. There's some minor issues that will probably take place next spring. Uh, and the city equipment right now is being prepared again for the snow, with the sanders and plows and so forth. We have new stop signs uh installed on Grace and Herb Street at South Halit Street, and that's for the schools. Uh, and that was prompted by our mayor, Mayor Cooper. For an incident that happened last night.
Yes.
So, but it's very busy on there.
Yes.
I know, because I drive a school bus, you know, once in a while and. All the parents and kids and everybody's trying to get there and to go home afterwards. So stop sign was a good thing to have. Uh, as far as the uh general government. Uh, we basically have the same thing. Except uh the FEMA generators are on the way and the preparation starts uh next week for that project. And uh. Just to look ahead, on December thirteenth, the Christmas lights will be on. That's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbl.
I just wanted to thank you, uh thank the mayor for, on behalf of my wife Carolyn and I, for the invitation to. The Teen Challenge Gala fundraiser, their annual event. Uh, it was a fantastic evening. We had a great time. Some great stories, fantastic organization. It was great to have, but we appreciate the invite. As I look forward to. Finding ways to support that organization more in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. It was wonderful to have you there. I want to thank the GIs all for um. Um, also uh attending our. Little watch party after our last council meeting and um, you know, grateful that I was elected to be your mayor for another four years and. We have great staff. We have um a great council. Uh, this doesn't always happen where. This is special time, special place for Medical Lake, and I think we all kind of realize that and it's. It's really a pleasure to serve with all of you and um so look, look forward to um. A lot of more hard work another four years and um we're going to work hard to get the money to fund the capital projects that. That you all approved and so just looking forward to seeing um those things happen. Um. Also glad that the government reopened and so uh that was a big deal. We um. We didn't, you know, have too many delays or pro- problems, but it caused a lot of angst in our region with having such a strong military. Uh, presence and employment in the region. So just that. And then tomorrow night is uh the Best of the West, um. Uh, Gala, if you will, I think it's a. Northern West Casino. I think you all received an invitation. If you didn't say yes and you changed your mind, you don't want to know, you do want to go. Uh, let Sunny know and we can probably still. It's interesting. So anyway, would love to have you there. It is Best of the Wild West and so I, you might. Need to wear a cowboy hat. I'm not sure, but anyway, that's good. So, but I'm looking forward to it. Um, they've been great. Um, they've been really doing a great, great job. So. Um, Mr. Weathers.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I. Um, have just a few updates to share with you tonight. Uh, for starters. Uh, Mayor mentioned the um grants and we had our Grant Writer kickoff meeting uh today. And it's just uh hitting the ground running. So there's some really great opportunities uh that line up with all the great. Um, direction that we have for the Capital Improvement Plan and. I'm looking forward to seeing how that works. We talked mostly today about. Um, cadence for checking in. Uh, and how we can report the opportunities that are being presented to us, the opportunities that are being authorized by us to pursue. Uh, and then of course the outcomes related to that and the status of all the applications and deadlines as they come around. Uh, and our plan, um, costs and I were talking and the mayor talking about wanting to be able to present you on the first meeting of every month. An update on how things are going and and you can have um awareness of of how many opportunities we've looked at. How many we're pursuing and where we're at, the status. Uh, also, I just wanted to touch a little bit on election results as far as the fireworks advisory ballot. Uh, measure went, that fifty-eight point two nine percent of our citizens said they want, they want their fireworks. And so. Uh, just again, really appreciate the opportunity to bring that to the citizens and hear from them and. Um, and I uh, and so now we know and we can, we can move accordingly. Um, also, just want uh to let everybody know that um our new council members, um Mr. Abbott and. Uh, Mr. Wilbur as well, both uh working on onboarding them and getting them ready. Um, you know, on that subject, uh December sixth, AWCS, their Elected Officials Essentials. Uh, if that's something that you're interested in attending, please let us know. We'll get you registered and um and we'll look forward to seeing you there. Uh, and then just the only other thing to say is that uh next Thursday, well, I guess. Schedule wise, this Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, following Thursday's Thanksgiving. Uh, Fred had said that gratitude turns what we have into enough and I just want to wish you all have Thanksgiving.
Do you want to add? Just a little reminder, where festival is December thirteenth. That'll be here right around the corner, the little Winter Village is up in Shining. Um, thank you to Councilmember Preacher and those of you who helped um get that up. Thank you to staff. Also for making it secure so the wind doesn't blow it over, which seemed to happen, knocked it in past. So anyway, we're grateful. And I'm just looking forward to having um a really. Great, wonderful family time on the thirteenth. It's always just a field been all the way around. So. Um, thank you, Sunny. Uh, Mr. Ronhold, how about a quarter three budget report if we want to.
Yeah, can I ask a question real quick? With this, with those election results, I I mean, people voted for the, for number one, which is great, but could we bring that back up for discussion? Just because I would like to talk about them, maybe saying you can't sell fireworks if we can't shoot them off that year. So if like they they say, the fire chief says, don't shoot off fireworks, it's too hot, the fire danger. I really think we need to say, can't sell fireworks that year as well.
Yep.
Further discussions as well.
I think, count if. Other council members may have other opinions that they would like to share too. So I think it would be great to have a workshop. Scheduled, if we could do that, start with council, maybe up to the first of the year. Like get the budget passed and then start that conversation and um just we can hear from everyone and and um. Have, you know. We know we like it and and so how do we do it? Well, I think is, and are the things that should change um in there. So. Yeah, so that we don't have as much angst and there's some more certainty. So anyway, appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, anything else before I move on? Mr. Ronhold, uh Q three budget report, page three in your packet.
All right, it sounds like it's uh it's live, it's home. So we won't have it on the screen, but uh council and anybody holding the packet. Uh, does have the uh, is the budget before she, she does.
The good news is there's nobody online, just for record.
Nobody to mess up.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, uh so. Starting with revenues. So for um, uh as you recall, I updated the the format in which these uh. Uh, reports are given uh so that um it's not a forty-minute presentation and council can go over it at their leisure. Uh, I saw, I'll just point out some um. Uh, anything that is noteworthy and otherwise council can review at their pleasure. Um. So for um. Most of the uh operational revenues, uh things are looking very good, um above what we would expect. Um. The only one that was um markedly low was the city beautification. Um, that relies relies on cable uh VNO taxes. And as I recall, um, some of the. Taxes came in after this uh quarter three. Um, and also it could just be that people aren't uh getting cable as much, who knows? Um. And then moving on to expenditures, operational expenditures. Um, so you can see I've highlighted, um, well, I did not highlight here, but uh grants, the uh grants department. Uh, is that ninety-four percent? Um, I will be uh in the following meeting, uh bringing forward a budget amendment. Um, it will have several items, one of which will be that. Uh, so essentially. Uh, that is uh composed of the groundwater study grant. Uh, that's the majority of what's in that department and the reason that it's nearing uh the top there is because they've been working really hard and getting that report done. Uh, and so um I believe the reason that it's um estimated to be over budget by the end of the year is just um. Uh, budgeting um process. Uh, we had, when we had plans for twenty-five, we hadn't got all the way through twenty-four. Uh, so my recommendation will be to uh increase the allocated expenditures by ninety-eight thousand and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, that will essentially allow them to finish the entire project. Uh, it is a hundred percent reimbursable, so all those dollars will come right back. Along with my, my time spent on the project.
And then also the additional expense will come back, all of it's reimbursable.
Yes, a hundred percent reimbursable. So everything that we spend on that um is then returned as revenue plus. Uh, my time spent on the grant. So technically we make my, uh, although my, my efforts are spent.
Can I do a nifty thing or?
Yeah, of course, of course.
Using your color coding, like you had your user guide.
Yes.
So why is that ninety-four percent not color coding?
Uh, I believe I just missed that. I do apologize. Yeah, that should be highlighted based on uh my, my formatting there. But thank you. Uh, you can color it in it.
Okay.
Just kidding. Um, okay, and then. Yeah, so color yourself the whole document. Um, and then uh moving on to the next uh item. Uh, is the Administrator Services Department, my department. Um, so I've been analyzing this a little bit closer. Um, I am going to bring forward a recommended uh budget amendment for this as well. Um, essentially, we had significant issues um with our HVAC system. Um. Uh, that caused a lot of unanticipated expenditures. Uh, we also had additional uh IT support. Uh, that we've been uh working on getting cybersecurity programs implemented. But additionally, there were several programs that council approved throughout the year. Uh, the page freezer website, um record software and social media software, uh the text alert software and the. Um, the email archive software combined um were unanticipated. Uh, one of the bigger items was. Um, medical insurance, uh so medical insurance premiums. Uh, looking back, I believe um when I was building the budget, it was based on. Um, what we paid in twenty-three. Uh, and uh we had staff, a couple of significant staff changes in my department that. Uh, increased those medical premiums. They had different uh circumstances than the previous employees, uh so it caused a significant jump there. Um. And then additionally, there was a rate increase to the um audit costs. So uh every hour that they spent on the audit was more expensive. Um, and then additionally, they had su- spent some extra time because of the single audit that we have. Um. Uh, and then, and so, uh. Yeah, and then moving on. Oh, yeah, of course, sorry. Yes.
I do, uh, related to insurance, uh, do we use, we use that AWC?
Um, AWC, uh, yes, for medical insurance.
Have they given us any indication as to rate increases for next year?
Yes, eight point seven percent. Yeah. Similar figure last year.
Heard it would be.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, they thought it would be upwards of twelve, so I hear that. What is the budget amendment that we'll be expecting then for um the admin services? You know, years ago.
Uh, oh, yeah, I apologize. Um, I'm estimating eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty. And I did highlight streets, um, but in looking closer in November, I don't believe that there'll be a budget amendment required. Uh, moving on then to um. Second page of expenditures. Uh, so I had marked uh parks facilities at seventy-nine percent, um although. Um, even in November, when most of the parks activities have decreased, we're still looking at decent numbers, so I don't anticipate that'll go over budget. Um, in fact, we still have a little bit more budget to make sure they put up all the decorations and uh take care of the facilities. Um. And uh so then moving on to water, um. I do believe um that I'll recommend in uh. Uh, budget amendment for water. Uh, so essentially we had um both an increase in revenues and expenditures. Um, fairly similar to one another. So um I was doing some approximations and found that um. We were looking at about a hundred thousand in revenues above what we had budgeted for for water. Uh. Um and then for what I estimate to um being overage and expenditures is approximately ninety thousand. A little bit less, um but I would recommend uh a little bit of a cushion there, um but as um. We had the Lenwell issues where the generator went down, um and it caused several other um issues with um. Um spacing the uh software, what it's called, but uh anyway, so they had to reprogram a lot and they also had to work on the meter. Cost a lot of issues and during that time, we had to rely on Spokane Intertie for water, so our water consumption from there. Uh was significantly higher and as you know, they they charged more, um so there were some additional costs uh there. Hey Scott, when did the Lenwell go down? Was that to?
And you're anticipating to transfer a hundred since that was, we had a hundred over in revenue, which is.
Yes, so e- exactly.
Through the end of the year safely.
Yeah, so essentially, I'm I'm anticipating um a net no change in estimated ending balance because the revenues will be higher and the. The budget amendment will bring the expenditures about the same amount higher. So ultimately, no, no impact, in fact, we'll probably have a little bit more revenues than uh anticipated. Um and then uh moving on to uh wastewater treatment. Uh I'm sorry, I did one touch on solid waste, um even though it's in the green on the budget report. Um I was uh doing some deeper dives, uh because we're gonna have uh a small window before the end of the year to make sure we address these. Um the budget, and so I found that um I'm. Uh that we should need approximately twenty eight thousand dollar budget amendment to solid waste. So for garbage, um because of the treatment of excise taxes. Uh that changed ha- uh following the D O R audit last year. Uh as well as uh just always trying to catch up to the rates, luckily, it was a lot less than anticipated, um I'm estimating will only be about. Uh ten thousand behind, so essentially, uh we paid, you know, we'll have paid Sunshine ten thousand more than what we um. Anticipated uh with the budget. Uh so not that far off the mark, uh but those those taxes, they they get away at it. Um okay, and then so for uh wastewater treatment, um that I will also be recommending a uh budget amendment for. I do apologize, I haven't, I haven't uh done too deep of a dive. Um as to why, and I'm sure Steve um would be more ha- more than happy to speak on it, but I did notice that some of the line items that pointed towards. Um requiring a budget amendment were uh insurance, um additional electricity uh expenditures. And then some other large purchases, purchases that we've talked about throughout the year, um such as pumps and mixers and such um. But I'll uh I'll be chatting with Steve and we'll just give the bottom of uh uh. Why we think it's uh higher than anticipated, but I'm estimating about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar increase for that. Budget amendment requirement. Um and I also do, I I do suspect that part of that is just the budgeting um. Cycle as things go up and we're basing it on uh prior year uh expenditures that. There's, there's always more um expenditures in the following year.
Are you anticipating this will be the final budget amendment of the year?
That's, that's what I'm shooting for, yeah, so that that is uh hopefully to capture any, any other overages anticipated. Um but I will um. Again, I'll dive a little deeper with Steve to make sure that I'm capturing anything that he thinks might come up. Um but that's just based on the the line items as they are, that's what I estimate.
So it looks like about four hundred thousand dollars to me this.
Uh yes, and I um I do apologize, one that didn't um. That didn't come up on the report, but I did want to address, um so the FEMA repaving project. Um will be um paid for out of the contingency fund, uh since that's where all of the other um FEMA related. Uh gray road fire related expenditures came out of. Um and I'm estimating that was, the whole project should be about seven hundred and ten thousand. So um I'm gonna propose a budget amendment to capture that as well. Um of course, that is seventy five percent reimbursable by uh the federal government and then uh twelve point five. Um by the state, and then if we are successful in our um legislative preparation actions, we can hopefully get it all reimbursed, but. Still a uh amendment to.
The toll is half percent those. Eighty thousand or some. But we and the, but we have funding in that account.
Yes, there's, there's funding in the account, um there was funding that uh we've been reimbursed for other projects that we. Uh spent money on, so it's kind of just um. Yeah, it should just kind of cycle through until all of this is, all the dust is settled and then we can um. Figure out where to put any, any remainders from that fund, but. Yeah, there's, there's plenty.
With the balances in the contingency fund right now.
Should be on the next page.
I want twenty three. Current balance ninety five.
Yeah, which um you know, it's uh it is. A fund that's based on um the general fund. So essentially, the the net zero, once we get paid, once we get paid back from uh. Once we get paid back from FEMA in the state, that should, will have some funds left over um. In there. Um if you know, the eighty is the, is the city's burden.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you said seven hundred and ten thousand. That we're gonna pay upfront and ninety five dinner, that's why I was like.
Oh, sure, well, the um. The accounting, I'll, I'll deal with the backend accounting side of it, but essentially. Uh you know, we, yes, it it will be negative when we pay it upfront. Um but as reimbursements come back, it'll make it whole, um and if there is any um. If it's negative, uh really, the only potential impact is that when I file the annual report. Uh this fund actually rolls up into the general fund, so the reporting will would remain the same in a way, um so, but. It's just a way of managing those funds.
Thank you.
That uh let's see, that does conclude my um recommended budget amendments, but there is the. Um project based funds um sheet that shows where everything's at. Uh funding wise, uh beginning balance, revenues, expenditures and current balance. Um of those funds, so it gives you a good idea uh where everything's at. As far as those funds that don't have um, you know, operations, you know, consistently.
Is there an update on the kitchen remodel or?
Sure, um so I may not be the best person to update you on the kitchen, uh but Glenn was talking about the um. They are, uh they went in to start demoing, uh and I think they've uh their plumber backed out, uh so they're just. Finding a new plumber to to get in and uh get that done, and so um I think last we've heard, that's, that's what we're going, working on right now. Um but demo is supposed to start um today.
This week, the equipment's been ordered, it was about a three or four week delivery timeframe and they're, they were anticipating having the construction done in advance of the equipment. Arriving, so.
And then, um then you're also asking about the Coney Island dock. Yeah, um Sonny, would you mind?
Sure, the Coney Island dock, um so we had that. Unfortunate circumstance of the contractor plans are to, um so the permits that we had acquired also expired and so have to reapply for those permits. Good news is. All work is the same, and so I will be able to do that uh. Without as much of the learning curve and then um we're in the process of finding uh new contractors to deliver on on that project.
Is there an estimate, I mean, it's gonna cost more than I would assume.
Most likely, uh in most likely will, I uh I'm anticipating probably around fifty thousand dollars additional um. But there's also in our kickoff meeting with the grant writers, there are some shoreline stabilization funds. Grants available that we can pursue to help pick up that difference. And give it a try.
That's good news, so.
Yeah, a question?
Thank you for the questions.
This, I don't need this information right now, I just, I was curious because when you were talking about wastewater and you mentioned. Uh extra electricity costs. Sure, I'd like an update at some point on what this, our solar panels are doing, how they're working for us and.
Yeah.
How that correlates.
Yes, um I believe we were provided with a um. Measurement and verification report as a, as a part of the conclusion of the grant. Um that I can make sure that is sent out and uh potentially provided to council.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very nice. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um this for you, boss, uh quarter three code enforcement report. Thanks for uh getting on that, you had a short turnaround, I appreciate it. You're doing great work, we appreciate what you do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um I'm back again with the unique distinction of being. The least liked employee of the city, and why, well, I'm so glad you asked, um it's because I'm either not doing enough or I'm doing too much. Not aggressive enough or too aggressive, unfortunately, it's, that's how law enforcement is, but. Still working hard for you, um. I'm at hundred and forty seven cases for the year, which is uh above forty five percent. Uh of last year, last year, I ended the year, the hundred and one cases, I'm at a hundred and forty seven now, so I've been pretty busy, lot going on. Uh my, my issues really are the complexity of some of the cases. You know, I send a, I send a, you know, letters and I deal with the whole process. And then we get it and it goes out and I get to the point where I'm like, well, I have to write these people a ticket, I have to find them, and I don't like doing that. You'll see seventy, seven, over seven percent go to civil infraction. That process is interesting because when I, that's where I'm at my end, I don't have any more power, I can't, they won't budge, so I. Send them a, a notice, it goes out to the, from the court. And then the court kind of takes over from there, and that's where it gets complex, because then I have to have the court follow up with me or I have to follow up with them. And there have been some issues with that, that's been kind of one of those things, so. Uh something that I am looking forward to going forward is, is the new court and the adjustment to the new court. Think that will benefit from that significantly and the process will improve for me, which will allow me to write more tickets, and I don't want to write more tickets. But when I do write a ticket, I want something to happen. I don't want to see success and some of these things, like just for instance, on Thursday, I have a case that's coming to court. The people have been to court four times and I've written them two tickets and they. Basically, it's been, it's a long story, but and this is the point where they either get fined. And then what do I do from there, do I write them another ticket, well, then that goes to a different court, so that it's kind of restarts the process, so. It can be slow, difficult and complex, but I'm doing the best I can with what I have. Um right now, with the case numbers, uh the vehicle numbers have gone up significantly because I've been pushing pretty hard on people's vehicles, tagging them, putting window stickers on them. Um the truth of the matter with that is I don't have the power to tow people's vehicles yet, I'm still working on that and that's something I'm gonna work with the new court on to see. How they want that done and how the sheriff's office can get me trained up so that I can get cars towed. Uh that, that needs to happen at some point and. Uh but the one, the one thing that has been good is I've been able to tag vehicles and I have the ability to run license plates and VIN numbers so that I can contact the registered owners. And call them myself and say, hey, listen, your trailer's on Lefay Street, you have this many days to move it or have to issue a civil infraction. And is that the right course of action, our junk vehicle code says it's not, but that is a course of action I can take because I can name that a nuisance. And as I've said before, everything can be kind of considered a nuisance, everything can kind of go under the nuisance code, so. Uh sixty seven percent are closed, five point five on watch and. Twenty six are currently open, twenty six percent currently open. So moving forward, coordinating with Airway Heights Court staff to allow for a smoother transition of cases, um I know that things are changing there, I found out today that I think. Believe the judge is changing, so that might be very good, because isn't it the prosecutor? The former prosecutor is becoming the judge?
Um not necessarily, so we're interviewing, but there is a new judge that uh. The city of Airway Heights put out an R F P, um they've had their judge there for some years and he was a fantastic judge, but he might say some of those things, the contracts. So it went out and then in the meanwhile, um. Seven lawyers applied, um Airway Heights um interviewed um some. All of the applicants and then I will be interviewing one their selection tomorrow and um if. I'm not happy, then we can go back and say, how about somebody else, but yeah, so I'll be interviewing someone tomorrow and um. Looking forward and you'll probably see that appointment that will happen um at the next council meeting, all of the appointment letter, so the mayor appoints. Um the judge in the municipal courts, when there is not an elected judge, you have an appointed judge. Uh but then they're separate, um and not under the jurisdiction of the mayor once they're selected, so. Anyway, that will all happen in the next uh couple of weeks.
Right.
So.
It should be a great transition and. The one problem it's gonna be is I I've learned how to deal with the Cheney court system and now I'm gonna have to switch gears and learn how they want it done over there. Hopefully, it's smoother, I'm sure it'll be very similar, it's court, right, it's ready to take, they, you know, work through it, maybe they use sector. We'll work through those problems, but it is gonna be a slight adjustment. Um but I would really like to push harder on getting vehicle impounds, that's something that I could do, because I mean, I I could at at some point, you know. Call it out and get a tow truck to come, do I want to tow people's cars, no, but is it necessary, it is, at this point, it really is, so. Um and then I'm gonna keep trying to engage better with the community moving forward, so. Uh you have any questions?
If uh you really felt strongly about having a vehicle towed, it was in violation. Um. Uh can you call the sheriff's office and have them towed, have you done that yet?
So I would have to call crime check like, like a regular citizen would and start the process and have them report it, and that's just how it works unfortunately. Um I have worked with Reyes and Mina on the the front half of it, which is. Basically, Mina does it a little different than Reyes, but you you basically. Contact the registered owner, go and tag the vehicle, mark the tires, and I know all that process, but then to call for the tow truck. It kind of changes hands a little bit because then you have to write them a parking ticket, because you have to take the vehicle if you're gonna tow it. Um unfortunately, at that point, it opens the city towards some liability if there is an impound hearing, I'm sure you've witnessed impound hearings and they can get pretty aggressive when. People's property are taken off the street, so I want to make sure that everything's squared away really well with the new court before I start yanking cars off the road.
It's just having a strong ordinance that allows for tow, you know, there's state law that allows for tow anyway, you know, all of that, but. Um no, I appreciate that, so thank you for your diligence, I. I um I'm just really happy and.
Looking forward to title one changes as well, I know you're gonna be seeing me at a lot of council meetings coming up and. I'll be at the planning commission on Thursday as well, because we're moving on that title one stuff with Lisa, so. You'll be hearing more about that and I'm really looking forward to that, it's gonna help me do my job better, so.
Thank you for your personal merits.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're asking, do you have chickens towed?
Yeah, chickens don't have toes.
Moving on to number six, back to serious business. Order is eleven thirty seven, unauthorized funds update. Missed.
Good evening, again. So. Uh this workshop is uh addressing the concerns that I brought up in the uh budget retreat. Um but for new council members, essentially, this is. Um we uh we have a very old code uh for our funds and the funds are essentially our municipal accounting um. Method, and so a lot of the funds uh haven't been looked at since nineteen seventy one. Um and apply to uh things that we don't do anymore, uh like police and fire and and such.
Just straight, no.
Yeah, uh it's, it's pretty funny to go through.
A police port, no.
Exactly. Um and so what I have uh developed and is proposing is uh is a more modern structure. Um more uh reader friendly uh to understand what our different funds are, what they're for, what their uses are um. And and it's also funds that we currently use. Um and so uh a lot of this was addressed at the workshop, but um if council has any questions about um. The the language here, I'd be happy to address it.
What I like about it, so straightforward and simple. Um not complicated. And um. It's just something, hopefully, it will be reviewed, you know. Every year along with the budget, it's like, do we do that or is it, is it something else, does it need to change, you know, not that laws should change quickly, but it would be. Nice to stay on top of it, so.
I I agree, um my uh theory behind this is, uh so as any time that uh I'm proposing a new fund. I, I agree, uh, my, uh, theory behind this is, uh, so as any time that, uh, I'm proposing a new fund um, with an upcoming budget, um, such as I am with this budget, um, the example being, uh, the Stormwater Fund. Uh, we don't have that now and so adopting it, uh, through ordinance by council, um, prior to enacting it in the read action, um, I, I would have done it sooner, but the entire, uh, ordinance required an overhaul, which was a lot of work. Uh, but yeah, that, I agree, that would be the, the perfect way of, of, uh, orchestrating that.
So great. The other thing I love about this is that it does establish um, how we manage our funds for, you know, when I'm gone and you're gone and the world is, you know, that, that gives guidance, um, and establishes the actual law of how our funds are managed. And so it can never go back to being, everything's in one big punch bowl and we just turn it up and pull, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so it took a lot of work to get here and I, I think, um, I want to commend you on that, but also nobody but you knows how much work you put into this and so, um, we're grateful and I, I think it's straightforward and plain language and I really like the way it looks. So, council, if you have any questions or comments, I think.
Streamlining is good.
I would agree.
Yeah. So, all right, well, yeah. Appreciate that and we will be looking forward to bringing that forward. Will you have that down in the next council meeting as an ordinance?
Uh, that's the goal. Uh, as you'll notice, uh, the last three digits of each, uh, code number, uh, is, is X's rather than a code. Um, I'm attempting to align it with the, the changes that are being made to Title One, uh, so that it, it all makes sense along with all the other code. Um, if that's not in the line yet, then I'll wait just so we don't have to update it yet again after the code's updated, so. Um, but yeah, next, next opportune time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll executive session. We do have a public hearing then on the twenty twenty-six preliminary budget. That's your nice folder here. And we will open the public hearing, is correct, at, um, seven forty-two. Open. And, uh, we need to read anything on the. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make some opening comments. Uh, firstly apologizing because, uh, the numbering only reached the first page, which doesn't do anybody good. Uh, but, uh, so anyway, if you have any questions, uh, we'll have to use some, uh, some narrative to get to the bottom of that.
Uh, can I interrupt just quickly? I did give each, I wanted the council members, um, seminar's twenty twenty-six budget letters we had, uh, and, um, that, that that would be some part of your preliminary budget package.
Thank you. Um, but no, um, other than that, I, I'm here to entertain any questions and kind of just open the floor and then also have the way to allow any further comments.
I really appreciate you bringing this up so regularly. This is not anything new. We all know what's happening and this, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll also mention, just because I'm excited about it, I was able to get everything, uh, uh, portrait rather than landscape. So you'll notice it's a lot more user, uh, reader friendly as you go through the budget, um, the details. Um, and I, I found that to be a lot, a lot easier.
Uh, nice, nice margins, Mr. Ron.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, you can't, uh, take for granted your format and.
It's, it's so true. Um, I do want to say that I think council is also appreciative of the time that we took during the retreats, workshops and, and all the effort, um, working. I had individual meetings with the department heads, met with Coss, um, and Sunny and I just appreciate, um, all of the systematic effort that it took to, um, get in the right, land in the right place and, and understand where we are and um, bring forward that, uh, what we feel is a good preliminary budget for council reviews, um. Thank you for your work. So over here.
Um, questions before.
Yeah, I was gonna say, any questions about the budget? Um, if there are, then we take public comment, tell ourselves, we closed the hearing first. Okay, anything else while we're in the hearing, council, okay. Close hearing then at, um, seven forty-seven. And I've opened then for public comment on anything related to the preliminary budget. And there's no one online, I don't know visitors, so, um, the next step then would be to, um, bring this forward, um, at the next council meeting and that would be the first read of the budget. Oh, I thought they did, oh, closing the other comment now. One minute later, seven forty-four. It's like keeping my toes with this. Oh, we're getting really good at it. I don't know, you know, brushing through, um. Okay, so now that the hearing is closed and the public comment period is closed, uh, just for the record, then, uh, we'll say that we will be bringing forward then the, uh, preliminary budget um, at the next council meeting for the first read. If council members have any questions, any concerns, please reach out, uh, Mr. Ron. Um, as soon as possible with those questions, we can anything cleared up. Okay. Without further ado, we'll move on to some action items. We have the consent agenda, the approval of the number November fifth, twenty twenty-five minutes on page eighteen. Any changes or additions?
Move to approve.
Any other comment discussion? Yes, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Me opposed. Through November five, twenty twenty-five minutes, I will say, um, council member, um, Ray Abbott should probably abstain because you weren't here, um, for the November five, uh, meeting. So I'll say it all in favor. No longer abstention. All right.
Yes, real quick, just for the budget, do we have, we still have two meetings left to get that approved, so.
Yes, so we have.
Two meetings.
First read is our next council meeting, second read will be the second meeting in December. And if you don't pass it, then I'll see you on Christmas Eve.
All right, well, that sounds actually pretty nice. Okay, that's really close. Okay, that's good.
Bringing the hot cocoa.
Okay, I like it.
But we're hoping that that will happen by the second.
Okay.
Sixteen.
That looks great, so I'm sure.
So December second, we'll have the first read on the preliminary budget.
Right.
Right? Okay. You never know what I might say. Um, the approval of the November eighteen, twenty twenty-five payroll claims, the warrants number five three one one six, three five three one two three and the payroll payable warrants number three oh two nine two, through three oh three zero one in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars thirteen cents. And claim warrants number five three one two four, three five three one seven seven in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, six and seven cents.
Move to approve. Second.
And I know all council received the finance, financial packet. Any further discussion on the finance? All in favor? Any opposed?
Does that need to be seconded?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Any seconds? I mean, um, under action items, appointment of Cynthia Altite to the planning commission. So we did receive two applications, um, and I have selected Cynthia Altite and I will be signing that letter and sending that out. Um, well, so really looking forward to having her on board. She's filling a vacant seat and they will be meeting, uh, later this month. So I'm looking forward to that. I will make, um, an announcement that one other planning commission member has let us know, uh, she will not be continuing on. She served for many years um, on the planning commission and ready to give someone else that opportunity. So we will be posting that. So there will be another opening. So if you know or friends, uh, that, that might want to be involved, um, please, um, send them our way, but we will be putting that out, um, in ad and on the website, so to speak, yes, so. Coming soon, as soon as we get the official letter, but it's, I want to give you some bits coming. Um, no resolutions. We have an ordinance, a second read, um, oh, I'm sorry.
You do need counsel to affirm your appointment?
Oh, thank you. I thought I just have all this power. My magic won't be. Uh, do we have a second for Ms. Alt? Uh, any discussion?
Is there a chance to see any of the applications? And like, I don't know, it seems weird to vote for it if you didn't know anything.
So this is the mayor's appointment and so, um, if you want to, um, abstain or, um, if it doesn't pass, then you can.
Oh, sure, good choice.
We usually don't on the mayor's appointments. They're not sworn in. They're advisory to the council and and very important, but, um, I've never shared those in the past, but I could if you wanted to.
Okay, so then we don't get to vote for it?
You do. You have to affirm my appointment.
Did we do that for the judge or is that separate?
He'll be, if I appoint the judge, uh, when I appoint the judge, uh, he'll come be sworn in. He does have to be sworn in and have an appointment and you do have to affirm my appointment. We'll invite him to the meeting. You will get to meet him and then you do have order and then you will have to affirm uh, that appointment.
Thank you.
Good question. Another good question. Um, is there a concern?
Oh, no, I was just asking. It just seems weird to vote if you.
Um, so she's been very active in the community and been very active with Reimagine Medical Lake and they know her and just don't know that you know her, um, but, um.
She voices her opinion without hesitation. Oh.
She is. And she's, uh, well spoken and, uh, well worked.
Move to approve for Cynthia.
That's it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, I believe in the future. When we have an appointment though, I will share, uh, there. It's just a letter really and quick application.
I've actually seen you do it before, so I understand the process.
So we'll have other advisories too. So for instance, when I've appointed those to the salary commissioner to the department board, we don't usually bring all those people in or, or actually review and it's that same level. It's an advisory position, um, but I'm sure happy if, if you'd like to have them come or or show you their application, I'm happy to share those.
I think just a application beforehand would be kind of helpful, I guess, just to know if that's possible.
Sounds reasonable.
I agree.
So will you help me remember to do that? Thank you. Whenever. Also have the application included. That would be great. Thank you. Um, and then on the monthly reports, um, if we can be sure that everybody gets those, including myself, um, so I can replace your work. I don't think I've got better if I didn't miss it, so.
I, yeah, I'll forward those. I haven't had a chance to forward them yet.
Oh, okay. I was jealous because if you said page three, you didn't have one. Okay, um, but I have friends who like to share. So we're good, just saying. Um, ordinances. Okay, now we're back to number eleven, the second read, unless there's anything else before we move on. Um, and this is property tax levy for twenty twenty-six, the second read, um, of ordinance eleven thirty-six.
City of Medical Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number one one three six, and ordinance of the City of Medical Lake, Washington. Levying the regular property taxes to the City of Medical Lake, Washington. Spokane town for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand twenty-six can provide revenue for the provisions and city services as, as set forth in cities.
Happy to answer any questions if they're already.
If we're, Cynthia, a new member too, would you want to give a quick brief of what the property tax ordinance is? We've talked about it in a workshop and was sent a recommendation back to staff and so if you briefly.
Yes, yes, I'll do a, a brief, uh, run through, uh, so with property taxes, um, just essentially how this process has worked up into this point um, is that we'll do a, I'll do a presentation at our, uh, budget retreat with council to uh, illustrate all the circumstances surrounding the property tax, uh, what it was, uh, what the potential impacts are of, uh, potential increases, um. And then, um, in the meeting, um, preceding, uh, the last meeting, uh, the council elected to, uh, choose a zero percent increase over the last year's property tax, uh, so that will be, um, increasing by zero, um, outside of any increases, uh, caused by improvements, new construction, et cetera, that gets captured, um, as a part of our, um, property taxes. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Move to approve, second read. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Right, passing unanimously, ordinance one one three six. That was from a zero percent increase for property taxes. Thank you, council. Um, emergency ordinances, ICN's, upcoming agenda items. You have something, as briefly ago, we had mentioned tonight, in the January, we'll, uh, have a workshop on the, uh, the fireworks and, um, if there's anything else that someone would like to bring up on their agenda, yes?
Uh, I just wondered if there was a updated timeline about the appropriation of the cameras for the parks.
Yeah, uh, yeah, um, the agreement that we wanted to have with the county for the reimbursement, um, was continued. They, they had a piggybacks contract with um, Seattle or King County, which lapsed and so there's no contract to piggyback on. So we're just, now we're going through proper procurement channels uh, to identify a way to purchase the cameras through proper procurement policy.
Hoping to get the same cameras.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's the goal. Uh, they just, they have a, a different vendor that they're sending their flow from, um, and they're, and also sending their contract. Um, if, if the procurement side of it flies, then we'll, then I'll bring something forward to council, but if there's issues with, with their contract or the, or the materials that they want to sell us, then we, we may have to go out to bid, unfortunately, but that's something we have to do. So I'm just waiting on a response.
Okay. But we were briefed that the poles, uh, and the bases and the, the conduit going in, uh, that, that, that's on on track, uh, and will be installed. So when we do get the camera, actual camera agreements together and secure them, uh, for the law, we'll we'll be able to install them on poles because that'll be in place.
Great.
Thank you for asking. And so then if there's anything else that comes to mind later, be sure to reach out. Sunny will add as a workshop. Um, or your, your question answered. Right away. Um, opportunity for interested citizens to comment, uh, anyone in the room. I know we're all interested, interested citizens, uh, anyone who would wish to comment. Or once, twice, grace.
Move to conclude.
There you go.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're ready.
It's so great.